Meeting called order for East Greenwich Central School. There's a board of education meeting for August ninth. All board members are present. That's terrific for a summer, summer meeting. So we have the attendance. We call the order. Let's rise and.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, everyone. First order of business is the minutes. We had the organizational meeting July 12th. And Joanne was not here. Michelle was late. Any motion to approve the minutes? Mark second. Emily, you all those in favor? Abstaining?
I was, I was early. I was. I'm okay with it.
Approved. Draft minutes of the regular meeting. Questions or comments, revisions to the minutes? Joanne was not present. Need a motion to approve those. John second. Cheryl, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Approved. Next order of business is the board forum. I'll start on my left with Cheryl. Anything, Cheryl?
Good. John?
Yeah, I know. It's confusing that we're next to each other. I just, I had heard that on the August 22nd Yankees game, I don't know whether they're playing on the 22nd, but they're home, there'll be a nice pregame ceremony for our New York State Champion Baseball Team. So just so people know about it. Yeah, it's really exciting for those kids and a lot of them will not have left yet for school. So be a nice last hurrah.
Senior.
Yeah.
Great, thanks for. Jesse, anything? Joanne?
I'm okay, thank you.
I don't have anything, just hope everyone's enjoying their summer. And we have a lot of appointments happening. Russ has been busy and the principals hiring staff and lots of good stuff happening for the district. We next go where public forum. Residents, students, employees and business representatives of the East Greenwich Central School. They address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations in the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to system concerns through the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will counter the individual nature. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the business forum does not deem to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which have been considered defamatory or stigmatizing or rated will be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Is there anyone like trust the board? No, small crowd today. All right, moving on to super report.
Thank you, Mr. Bureau. Welcome, everybody. It's been a while since we met. So thank you for the board members for being here this evening during the summer. And thank you for those members of the community that are here as well as those that are participating in the meeting via the live stream. I want to talk a little bit about the completion of the capital project that was approved by the community in 2017. We have completed and it has been certified that the fire and smoke alarm system is now complete as of last week at Columbia High School. There's still a little bit of work going on to remove the old system, but it has been inspected, it's been certified and the building is operating under that new system. The building now can be occupied. The positions that were approved for extra supervision ended on Friday. So thank you for that. And the, again, there's a little bit of work going on with the old system there right now, but we are going to have the building able to be occupied for the rest of the summer as we have sports teams now coming in and we are planning for the region's exams. So that project was very successful and it went fairly smoothly. Additionally, Jennifer Mulligan, our new director of business and finance, has been working with Paul Bickel and the vendor as well as LaChase Construction, which is our former St. O'Reuben Construction Management Firm to firm up some of the costs associated with Janay Playground. We bid out the site work, work that needs to be done to the ground and the surface, which is separate and apart from the equipment installation. Those bids came in a little higher than estimate. So Jennifer did a review with help from Frank Neiser from Questar Bosse to determine exactly how much room was left within our project as well as factors involved with what's called the incidental costs, which is a limit. There's a limit on that. So we think we're going to be good in terms of giving the Janay community what they wanted. In terms of the playground equipment, we may have to make a few adjustments to some of the items in the building that we were planning to do because you're required to do something in a building when you do work on the outside of a building in order to drive aid. So there were some doors that Mr. Bickle would have liked to replace. He's going, I think we're going to scale back the number of doors to make the playground work within the scope of the monies that are remaining in the project.
Yes, we may do that. We're just in the final stages of reviewing those costs to see exactly the extent we can do within the limits.
Very good. Okay, thank you. So that, that will be the last portion of the 2017 project, which would be the playground that will likely be completed later next school year. Hoping to, for late fall, but that's to be determined yet.
Late fall this year.
Late, late fall of, started by late fall by, by November. Then we will start the work. Anything else to add?
Nope. You covered it, thank you.
Very good. The other item I want to talk about, it's not on the agenda, but I have informed the board and we have informed Mr. Mahar. As you know, we were watching our class sizes in the elementary schools and we have a lot of registrations occurring this summer, really in all buildings. And we have initially back in April projected about 50 students in the third grade. At one time it was 49, 24 in one class and 25 in a second class. Those numbers are now about 53 with some additional registrations that have yet to have the full documentation submitted. So we are recommending adding the third class, which will bring the class sizes to about either 17, 18 and 18 or 17, 17 and 18, depending on whether it's the 50, 52 or the 53. That process has started. There likely will be someone within Belltop interested in changing grade levels. And then there's a contractual obligation that we have to offer that position to an internal person in the district before we hire somebody from the outside. We do have candidates identified. If it winds up being an external candidate through the processes that we've already started with some of the interviews. So we will have that teacher in place by the start of the school year. Roy, anything to add or? Or so anything to add? So I, I provided the board an update of where we stand, stood as of last Thursday. I'll continue to provide the board with an update regarding where we are at with our K5 class sizes. I don't anticipate any other additions between now and September. Our middle school seems to be in good shape with the exception of some positions that we haven't been able to fill yet. And our high school is in good shape and not in need of any additional FTEs that we know of.
Any questions? I know this was an issue that came to our attention last year with some of the parents and the community members about the size and staff, of course. I'm glad we took a look at it and we were able to add that. Discussion items, we don't have anything formal on the agenda. Just to bring up August 23rd, I was going to bring it up later, but since we have some time here. I'm not here, Mark's not here. So typically someone else will be running the meeting. Is, is there anyone else who's not going to be available the 23rd?
I'm not sure yet.
So you see the quorum. So typically we'll go to someone, other officers. We just talked to some folks and John has said he would preside over the meeting if that's okay with folks. So we can do a formal resolution here to just say John will preside for the meeting on the 23rd. If that's acceptable to anyone, any questions concerned? So anyone, when you make a motion to approve John for 23rd? Mark, second. Jennifer, all those in favor? All right, so you have the gap on the 23rd. Thank you, everyone, because I know we want to keep that moving. It will help obviously personnel in terms of hiring and appointments. It's a critical time to get people ready because they get to give notice to their districts if they're leaving contractual requirement of 30 days typically for people so they can get started with the district right away. Okay, so thank you, John. Appreciate that.
Records 30 minutes.
Don't mess with my gavel too much. Oh, it says he screamed.
I gotta break his record.
Yeah, he was like 10.
Oh, but he was like 10 minutes.
Sounds like the directive is to keep it short. And also Jeff is away with his daughter.
My daughter to college that day, so Mr. Styles will be filling in for me. He's confident he can do it.
A lot of pinch hitters.
He's been managed by Ms. Mulligan to not spend any money in my absence. Okay, very good. Watch him.
Don't worry, everyone on the board's getting rings.
Thanks, everybody.
So we'll move on to regular business if that's okay with everyone now. And approval of programs, residential or disabilities, anything you'd note to point out?
Dr. Bennett, anything out of the ordinary in terms of our CS? Very good, thank you.
All right. There's no questions and a motion to approve that. Mark second. Jen, all those in favor?
You know, Mike, your might be beating Martin pretty soon.
Well, there's some.
We're assuring you, we're not going to have any. In the 23rd.
So the next item is the approval of the RFP that was submitted by Holy Spirit as we had conversations in the past about our pre-K program and opening up to other providers. Holy Spirit came forward and worked in the district on providing a pre-K opportunity for our, our community members and families to help with our pre-K. Of course, are in line with the grant, so that's a plus for us. We'll see how things go. So any questions or comments on the Holy Spirit RFP?
The only thing I wanted to add is I'm glad to see that we are able to offer an additional section. How would transportation or will transportation be provided for these kids to Holy Spirit? Or is it just parents getting them there?
Parents have to, or family has to bring them to. There is no pre-K transportation for any of our.
All right.
Any other questions? All right, need a motion to approve that? Joanne, you second. Michelle, all those in favor? Ruth, thank you very much, everybody. Looking forward to checking that program out, making sure it meets our standards. Okay, the next piece is the UPK expansion. We are adding a classroom. It has shifted based on the belltop section. We are shifting to Green Meadow. We had that conversation also about that program. That one will be run by the Questar program. I can say that the teachers have already been hired for that program as well. Any questions or comments on that?
Just wondering, I noticed in the, in the program expansion proposal at the price per student for Bosse's, I was just wondering if there was a reason why it was double the price of the Holy Spirit figures?
I think there's differences in the credentials of the teacher and the teaching assistant and the program, which is one of the factors, certifications and the, the public, the fact that they're a public school teacher is working for Bosse's as well as there's a cost sharing to some degree of administering the program across the district within Questar. So cost is a little bit different, but the qualifications and the credentials are a little higher in there. You know, the, that gets divided into the overall cost of the classroom.
And the other thing is that Holy Spirit is kind of saying, I'm taking this at a loss. So if we get additional money.
Right, the actual cost of Holy Spirit are beyond the $5,400. I think it was 6,800, $6,800. They're willing to absorb that additional cost for now. And as part of the agreement, they indicated that if we were in receipt of an additional grant, because there will be a grant coming out in the fall, and if we were able to use that money to fund a current program, then they would ask for consideration for providing the full cost of the program. So we, we have that in our language of the agreement, but we haven't committed to it because we have to see whether or not there's more grant monies that flow and whether it's permissible under the SCD regulations to, to, you know, go beyond that $5,400. But we've been told that there is a competitive, another competitive grant coming out in October for, for pre-K.
Well, that, we have to apply for it yet or?
We will have to apply for it, yes. We had an update on this from state aid planning at Questar around the end of the school year after the state budget was passed and they said we should be looking for, you know, another source of funding coming from the state, which would be competitive.
Is the Questar price that's not, that's 189 six times four, I mean, four classes?
Yes. One classes with the 72 students. So the class at Red Mill, DBS, Janay and Green Meadow are those four classes at a total cost of 750, 8,400. And then the Holy Spirit class is serving 18 students at $5,400 a student. That's 97,200. And then we are offsetting some of the costs at Ekac to serve seven East Greenwich resident students, which is the early childhood education center. And their cost is about 7,224, 48 per student for a total cost of 50,000, 571.
And so there's 97 total students in this coming year's pre-K. Right? Between Bosse's Ekac and Holy Spirit?
That is correct, yes.
And our waiting list is about?
Still doesn't serve every kid, every child.
That's correct.
Which I still don't think is fair. I don't think it's right and fair.
So it's costing us $900,000 and we're getting back 523 state aid? Is that, if I'm reading that correctly?
Let me look at the, there's another document there.
Yeah.
We opened that. This is the document that Linda did prior to her retirement. The total expenses with the new arrangement with Holy Spirit and Questar III is 906,171. We are getting back from the state 523,800. We are, we are charging the general fund budget $100,000 and we are using some of the remaining ARP monies for a total cost of 813,400. And we are offsetting some of the additional costs next year's budget to about 92,077,1 by purchases that we made out of last year's budget. So the total, the total funding is 906,171. Balances out, but the actual portion that the state is paying for through the UPK is 523,800.
So it's a cost to the district of about $400,000.
Correct. And we're mindful of the fact that that, this is the last year of that 189,600 ARP monies that have to be spent by September, October, right? Jennifer, I think by the fall?
Yes.
I'm just curious. For, if we were to make changes like, like to facilities, like, like, do we have an idea how much it would cost? Like, I'm just wondering, like financing wise, will we, will we finance at a lower price of our annual cost currently worth? I'm just wondering, just if we looked at like, like facility changes.
So part of our process of working with the new architectural firm and construction managers will be to look at everything that's involved in the five-year plan. And we have had conversations as we've gone through the process with some of our prospective architects about looking at whether or not, what the cost would be in additional classrooms and how that might fit into the overall scope of the project. So we really haven't, we don't have a cost on that. But it is part of the conversation and the planning. And we hope that, you know, towards the end of September, early October, we'll be having a lot of public discussions about the scope of the next referendum project and what some of the, some of the options might be. And pre-K has been part of the conversation. We haven't made that a priority at this point in terms of adding rooms. We want to see what the, some of the other priorities that we've put together, such as some of the improvements to the learning spaces, the athletic fields, things that we've already talked about to some degree, what those items would cost as an overall referendum proposal. And Jennifer and I are setting up a meeting with capital markets, which handles our, our, our borrowing projections and our debt service projections. And we will be bringing some information to the board on that because that will give us an overall cap on what we could spend without impacting the tax levy moving forward. So there's a lot of information that's going to flow, starting in September and October to the board for discussion regarding the next capital project.
So I just want to pipe in and say that, you know, we call this universal pre-K, but I just want to be clear, this is not universal because every fan, child, child and family who want this is not able to get it in our district. So I think we should, we should keep that in mind, right? When, especially when we're talking about potentially making changes or losing funding in the following year. And this is something that ever since I've been in the district, families want this. More families every year sign up for pre-K for their children and they're turned away. So I think it's really great we can figure out how to add two new classes this year. But I think that it really behooves us if we don't think about a long-term plan here. There's not many times sitting on this board that I hear from public input and, and you can tell in this one, the number of people, families who sign up for pre-K who want to participate in this lottery. So I think we need to, you know, focus our, you know, future conversations on, on, on that and how we're going to, if we're going to sustain this or how it's going to look in the future, if this is something that the families of the district want. And I understand, you know, it comes at a price. And we can certainly dive into the research and there's lots of data. It's evidence-based about universal pre-K on the benefits of, to children and families and districts tenfold. So I just want to keep that in mind and I think this is great, but I think we need to move away from having these adding one classroom, one classroom and talk about, you know, a long-term plan.
Just to add to that, because we, we have been having that conversation. What would it look like? Because to, to address Emily's concern, we've raised that, continued pretty consistently through here. How do we move forward to garner support to actually bite the bullet and add that? Instead of, you know, do, does it need to, is it a board decision? Is it, is it a voter decision? Because, you know, the flip side is there's a serious impact to the budget. So that's that balance that we have to figure out where, what does that look like? If you were, if we were to say hypothetically, we want to go with a pre-K program?
Well, if you charged me with developing some proposals, I would do so. That would include likely different options involving classroom space additions as part of the capital project. Although keeping in mind those classrooms couldn't be added within the scope of one school year. That would be part of a renovation project. That would take three to five years to fully complete. But it is a board decision. So if you said to me, can we look at a referendum proposal that included additional classrooms? What that would cost versus what not adding any classrooms would be? Certainly we would put that together. And then you have the operational cost of the program in terms of hiring the teachers, the teaching assistants and then furnishing all those classrooms. So that would be an operational budget. The capital project may or may not, portion may not, may or may not be eligible for building aid. You'd have to submit a plan to the New York State Education Department that includes what you want to do. And depending on how you do it, it may or may not be eligible for aid. You have to submit your current capacity in every building, meaning how many kids you can use and assign to each classroom. Our class size numbers are generally lower than what the state counts. So they count 27 kids per classroom generally to figure out how much money they will give you per student to add those classrooms. You know, then you, you look at program design. You could have an idea where you do what we're doing right now is have one or two pre-K classrooms in every building. Or you could say, okay, maybe we could create space in one building or a building somewhere to have an early childhood center where all the pre-K kids are at the same site, which is what we had in my prior district. One of the benefits of that is you have all your pre-K educators in the same building. They can collaborate with one another and you may be able to save costs on speech, occupational therapy and related services that may be necessary for some children. If you have children that are eligible for those services because they're all concentrated in one building. So there's a lot of different options. It would ultimately be a board decision after looking at the financial analysis of what it costs. And then, of course, the part, if it was involved in construction, would be up to the voters. If they want to include that as part of their capital project. You could include that as a separate item in a capital referendum and say, do we put these X number of classrooms on our schools to have the space for pre-K? It's all dependent on the trade-offs that you have in terms of your availability of building aid, local taxpayer share of the overall project. But ultimately it is the board's decision to go out with that as part of your budget and as part of your capital referendum.
Do we currently, say hypothetically, we had to switch. Do we currently have the space to go full?
No.
I knew that.
We're, we, we're using really the last real available classroom at Belltop right now to add the third grade. Correct, Mr. Mahar? We do have room to work within Green Meadow and some of the other schools, but not, not to add. How many kids are on the total? 152 plus the 90?
No.
152 total. So you divide that by?
But that's only assuming, if, if we open it to everybody, there's going to be more than 100.
You're talking about approximately the same number of kids that are in kindergarten, about 300.
About 300.
Okay. 300 divided by 18. You're the math guy. So 300 divided by 18, Jennifer?
So.
14, 15 classrooms. So, so if you take the mainstream classes and you would have to bump up their class size to go to 28, 27? Contractually, how many kids can we put in?
Well, contractually it varies by, varies by grade level.
So. Pre-K's 18, but yes, you have contractual obligations for other.
I don't think you would achieve enough.
That's going to be.
Even if you raise class sizes at the K5 level, I don't think you would achieve enough space savings to add the pre-K.
So we would either need to buy a building, rent a building for a long-term aspect, build a building.
Or put the rooms on the existing building.
So the point, the point of this conversation is it circles back to what Emily said. This is a, an in-depth conversation that has to be part of the strategic plan and goals for the board.
Right.
And I think that being that we're going to be developing our goals and objectives and our strategic plan, this is something that we can dive into because if we're going to be effective of this, this is not going to be. My point is we're at capacity now for the pre-K that we can serve. We're, we're there. So instead of, we're, we're where we need to be. We have to open the next door to see the viability of it and do it sooner rather than later to, because otherwise we'll be just kicking the can down the road. And, and with the, the tying of the funding and everything. And maybe at this point in time, somebody in the ivory tower and Omni will figure out that this is important to people and, and fund it correctly or at least give us the, the proper aid ratios so that we can provide this service for more people. So I think this is a good conversation and we'll continue to have it.
New construction is not aidable, but.
Renovation is.
Renovation is. New construction is not. So adding on to a building would be aided. Building a new building is not.
Actually adding classrooms onto a building is not aidable at the same reimbursement as renovating an existing classroom. And building a new building can be aidable if you can demonstrate that you have enrollment growth to the point that you need that new building. But we're not there yet.
Do they recognize pre-K as growth or?
Pre-K is not considered in the overall enrollment numbers that the state, that the state uses to calculate building aid as of this point. But that could be an advocacy proposal.
And they look at square footage, right?
They look at the square.
This is, this is a classroom, right? This is, this is square footage, whether it's an office or it's a, you know.
Typically in the plan, you have your architectural firm work with your administrators. Typically in the plan, you have your architectural firm work with your administrators and label every classroom. The square footage of every classroom and what is currently assigned to that classroom, so if you have three classrooms assigned to kindergarten, they're labeled as kindergarten. Let's say there's seven hundred and seventy square feet or nine hundred square feet, some of the newer classrooms are larger. And your special education program, your AIS space, counselor space, and then you submit that document to. Jennifer and others and they calculate based on building, what's called building aid units, how much money you'll be able to receive. Generally for. Aid on that reconstruction project at a rate of approximately seventy-two percent, but not everything you do in that building is eligible for aid. So it's, it's pretty complicated.
And we'd have to accommodate fourteen classes, roughly.
Pretty much.
If this is something that the board wants to look at, I mean, I, based on the conversation, what I was thinking is, should we either? Have someone or have you lead some kind of study, because I think I need information about more of the details around the, the district. And then what options would be available to us, should we make this a goal of the board to expand universal pre-K to all district residents that are eligible? What are the implications of that? Is it, you know, is it option A, construction, reconstruction, added classrooms, option B, is it? Providers or leasing a, a early learning child center, developing something like that with an existing structure and leasing it? Or is a combination of the two to provide? What is the, because then you want to do is tell our community that we don't have capacity here, but if we're going to do it, these are the implications, here's the implication, working with our, of the financial pieces. And then if it's our goal, we can communicate all that to the community and say, here's what we'd like to do. We can do some, you know, forums and say, it's going to cost X, but these options, here are the implications, we're willing to move forward if the community wants to support it. And, and see how we can best message that. But I think the people have to have the information, the options, we have to have the information too.
Talking about a feasibility study.
Pretty much, yeah.
With options included in that feasibility study for expanding pre-K to every eligible child resident of East Greenbush.
And we could do an ad hoc committee of people who are interested in being part of that. It would involve, obviously, we're going through an architectural RFP process now. Financial people could do city planners evolve. And just really kind of dive into it as a separate issue because it's that important.
I would support that.
Think about that.
I think we should do that.
Yeah, I agree. I agree too, and I know what you've mentioned in the past, John, has also been, this is a good moment for us as we're trying to engage all different types of families and people. To make this an advocacy thing for our district as well, because I was thinking when you mentioned the grants coming up soon. Wouldn't it be nice if we were just hitting the price point within the state budget and not having to reapply for these grants year after year and hope we secure something? So it could be a real moment for us to get the word out to the community and get them to support. Yeah.
Well, I think it's really important to have these conversations, I'm not comfortable saying. Let's spend ten million dollars because we want to universally, I think that's a community decision. I think that's, that's why we're having this conversation because let's find out what's important to our community. Let's see, and if, and, and I think they'll surprise you if they're given the information, I think people are willing to pay. And it goes back to what we, how we lead this district through transparency and, and moving forward with a, with a vision and letting the stakeholders weigh in on it because. How, otherwise, if we don't have engagement and voter turnout, we don't know how to proceed and give them what they want. I mean, and I think we're at a point where the taxpayers of East Greenbush don't mind paying for the good service they get. It's when they're not getting the service, they begrudge paying, so I think if, if this is what the community wants, we should be prepared to present it to them and let them decide. And make an informed decision on how to move the district forward, but this hobscotch, we're at capacity. And, you know, we've had this conversation, so thank you, I appreciate, appreciate Emily bringing it up tonight.
Just for the community, community sake, if the community is watching this or watches the video, we said this the last time. The board has been very supportive of pre-K. It's important to remember that we've only received this stream of funding from the state for two years.
Right.
So. It's new to us and it hasn't always been offered to every district in New York State. It typically was offered to districts with higher. Reduce lunch needs of the students, so. Our board is doing what it can to efficiently use these funds to serve the kids and the families, but the dilemma is. As Cheryl has pointed out and others have pointed out, we, we are able to serve all of the kids now. It's a money and a space issue both.
I mean, we're good for twenty-three, twenty-four. So if we're going to, you know, do something for twenty-four, twenty-five. Really need to start sooner than later.
I think the reality is, what I heard is that the long-term plan would be like three years out. You know, if you're talking about renovating spaces and things, correct, right, you have to submit it and then get that work done. So we're already talking years down the road. And, you know, to be right, we, anyone who has younger children, right, like I have a newborn and, and a preschooler now. There is a childcare crisis, like I don't think that this is going to get better in the years to come, I only think that we're going to start seeing kids. Who haven't been socialized coming into kindergarten because you literally can't find care. And I think like this would only help our community, help the district, but I do think, I acknowledge that, and that's why we need to move on it now because this is. If we actually do a substantial change and try to make it universal, this is years down the road.
So. One of the advantages of if a, if a, if a building became available, I don't know what that building would be. And that that building met New York State Education Department requirements for a school space. And a certificate of occupancy and if the board approved a lease arrangement. And if the public has to approve that lease arrangement as well through a public vote, you could get the program expanded quicker. If you had the general fund money and the UPKA to be able to support all those additional teachers. And TAs, the fourteen teachers and TAs you'd have to have. So that, that would take less time, but again, the big if is, do you have the money to be able to staff the program?
What, so. I mean, this downstairs and upstairs used to be classroom space. Would it be more feasible to look to move central admin to a leased building, like we used to have? And turn this back into educational space?
We could include that as part of the feasibility study and look at what that would cost and what that would, that would be involved.
Because where this is already an improved school, I think it would be easier to turn this back to classroom space than to find a building. Somewhere else and turn it into classroom space and get approval by state ed, whereas it might be easier to go back to turning this into classroom space. And then finding, you know, another option for central administration, whether it's the building, whether it's leased property on the outside. And then, you know, dedicate this to be the, the educational space.
I think you gained yourself a spot on the ad hoc committee, Marty.
No, yeah, no ideas. Okay, back to the business at hand, we want to approve the, the. Item on the agenda. Went through a lot of good comments, sounds like we got some directions after.
Very good.
Short, long term possibilities and then feasibility study. Need a motion to approve this, Jesse second, Emily, all those in favor? Opposed, approved, thank you. Table of motions, I don't have anything, old business, board members, anything?
Yeah. The SRO program, we had a deep discussion last board meeting, and I know you were going to try to meet with the town and, and find out the.
Some contractual SRO.
The contractual stuff, yes.
We were going to, in general, we did have those meetings, we did talk with Jack Conway and Colleen. I think I have Colleen's last name right now, Jennifer's, Jennifer's mother, I know her, Jennifer's mother. And I had a separate conversation with the chief and we worked out some proposed language for the agreement. And we were going to talk a little bit more about the particulars in executive session because it's a contractual arrangement. But we, we, in general, I could say that it's a two-year agreement. Originally, and Mark had brought this to my attention, that it was wording, it was a three-year agreement. The reason for the two-year agreement is the current sheriff's agreement, which is already approved. There was just a timing misunderstanding, the town had thought that they wanted to bring their agreement into the same time schedule. As the sheriff's agreement, but they're already into their second year this year, the sheriff's agreement, so. If you approve the East Greenbush agreement, it would be on the same schedule to expire at the same time that the sheriff's agreement expires.
So this should be the last year of the sheriffs, because they've been there two years already.
No, this is the second year, you approved one last year.
We approved a new.
Yes, you approved a new three-year contract last year and twenty-two, twenty-three was the first year. Twenty-three, twenty-four is the, is the three year, twenty-three, twenty-four is the second year and twenty-four, twenty-five is the third year. So the agreement we're going to bring to the board, if you agree. Is twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five with East Greenbush, so it is in sync with the sheriff's agreement that you approved last year. And we had some conversations about summertime and what we're being billed for and we want to share more information on this with you in executive session.
Any other old business? Moving on to consent agenda, there was a quest to pull item C for a separate vote. So we have items A through. Any other comments, questions about that?
Also, item B.
So we have two separate votes.
And I can just ask a question on the overnight trips. I, I don't remember seeing a general one, which I like, by the way. Do we normally have a general one and then every time we have the specifics behind it?
Mike Leonard used to always submit one in general to let the board know that this approval is required if it's qualified for the sectionals or state. And if travel is about, and then later, now Ryan will submit the roster of the kids and the teams for specific approval of where they're going. What's the overnight stay and so for example, if the kids go down to Long Island for the track meet or whatever, you will get that information in the future.
It's good to see where, you said there was more competitions for our, our G learning team. Which is good to see some opportunities there. So we have the items with the exception of B and C for separate vote. Need a motion to approve that, there's no other questions. John, second, Michelle, all those in favor? Item B, the instructional personnel memo, need a vote on that. Some motion, I should say. Michelle, I need a second, Cheryl, all those in favor? All those abstaining?
Want to congratulate Rebecca Delaney who's here, you just hired her to be our middle school English teacher, she comes from wide and skilled.
Thanks for coming.
And your husband is Kevin, right?
I'm also super impressed. We're in another district and I, my total staff all the way up to the superhead, I just stepped forward.
Thank you.
I almost actually applied.
It's not big enough for both of them.
So what do you think of the board? How about the Yankees?
Graduations. Going to the next item that was pulled, item C, the non-instructional support personnel memo. Someone has a substitute there, so need a motion to approve that. Joanne, I need a second, Michelle, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Jennifer's daughter is Maura. Great to see that. So that concludes our consent agenda. We do have an addendum for a bus driver. So need a motion to approve the bus driver appointment. John, second, Jennifer, all those in favor? Brian, thanks for the coming on board. How's it going with bus drivers?
We are really excited, on opening day, we should just have everything filled with the exception of three. And we have about four more individuals currently in training, so we actually have more in training than we have available positions, so we're very excited.
Lot of work, I know.
All right. Item thirteen, new business, board members, any new business going forward? And our second public forum. And board forum, most of my rate with Emily.
Like to congratulate Mr. Mahar on his impending resignation or retirement. Thank you for everything you have done for this district, it hasn't gone unnoticed.
How many years, Marty? Thanks, Joanne.
No, congratulations. I was just thinking, and just, just to go back just, just a little bit, I was wondering just about the tracking of assets, like it was. What I was wondering was, it's just, do we have a process for like life cycle? I'm just thinking just like global perspective, you know, tracking of assets like, you know, what was like the life cycle of like a laptop or what's like the life some? That's, that's all I was wondering and just, you know.
We, we do have a process that inventories all our technology equipment and we also have a process where Questar Voces comes in and tags all of our physical inventory. Furniture, file cabinets and I think that typically happens in spring, doesn't it?
I'm not quite sure what happens for East Greenbush, but.
Peter's, Peter's mouth, Peter, go ahead, when does it happen? So when that happens, everything is accounted for and tagged and periodically. We, we have a long list of the inventory that's no good anymore and basically what happened here is employee retired, did a terrific job, but. We cleaned out his space and he had accumulated a lot of, lot of parts and, and equipment that may or may not be usable. We determined that it wasn't usable, so that's why we have so many items on here, plus there's some items that were stored in the schools. So the space upstairs has been cleaned out for the new guy.
And, and there is that audit person too that will come in and do the cycle audit, audits of certain areas and sometimes the assets are listed on that cycle for review. It's whatever we use for him, Mike, I think.
Oh, Mike Wolf, yes, the internal audit.
So he also does different, and we can talk about, he's on the finance committee, but it's very interesting and then we kind of help direct him on what areas we want him to review every year. And assets has been on that in the past, so.
What is the lifecycle, Peter, of our laptops, technology?
Jennifer?
Yeah, just thanks Marty for all your service, I know the families at Bell Top will be sad and the students will be sad, but I hope you enjoy your last year.
Students will be sad.
Yeah.
Ask him how retirement's going.
How about a bus driver mechanic? He does, that's why. I'm good, I'm good.
Congratulations, Marty, still got a year left. Got some time, but kudos for the decision. All right, so we do have need for executive session for personal contractual items and personal matters. Other than that, we don't have any other business, we don't expect to come back to any business yet for the executive session, so. Now that I need a motion to move into executive session. Joanne, second, Emily, all those in favor? Right, everyone, thank you very much, have a great night.